I want to call back to order the February 9, 2021 regularly scheduled board meeting for the Richland II Board of Trustees. If I can have a motion to come out of executive session.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move that the record reflect that we ended executive session at 5:58 PM to resume public session.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote. While that's going on, and for the record, Dr. Elkins Johnson is with us via phone, and Dr. Holmes is not feeling well. She told me that I had to make sure I told you all it was not COVID. She's just sick. So, but she's at home not feeling well this evening and regrets that she cannot be with us. Zalena, who are we waiting on? Dr. Elkins, are you logged in?
I am logged in, but I have not received my pop-up yet.
Can you please voice register your vote?
Absolutely, if yes.
And Ms. Agostini, if you'll also voice register your vote. Oh, she voted, okay. Motion passes six yes, zero no. We'll now move on to the inspirational moment, Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, it gives me great pleasure to introduce to some and present to most, because we all know who she is, Dr. Helen Nelson Grant, who will be providing our inspirational moment for the evening, and we all know what she does in her day job, but I enjoy sharing a little bit about folks who come to the podium, just to let you know who they are as a person. Dr. Helen Nelson Grant is the Chief Diversity and Multicultural Inclusion Officer for Richland School District II in Columbia, South Carolina. Dr. Grant earned her Juris Doctorate Degree from Duke University School of Law and her undergraduate degree from Columbia College. She has been a licensed attorney in South Carolina for 36 years. She was previously a partner in a Columbia, South Carolina law firm and has served as of counsel to law firms in Fayetteville, North Carolina and Columbia, South Carolina. Prior to joining the school district, Dr. Grant worked for the Nixon Pruitt Law Firm, where she assisted them with recruitment, retention, and diversity initiatives. In her role in the school district, Dr. Grant is responsible for recommending, developing, implementing, and managing programs and initiatives aimed at advancing diversity and multicultural inclusion. She serves as a chief advisor to the superintendent in the development and implementation of diversity and multicultural practices and initiatives, and she is the district's chief spokesperson and district representative for diversity and multicultural matters. Her work includes providing professional development to district staff, coordinating and implementing district-wide cultural celebrations, advising administrators on issues or concerns regarding diversity and inclusion, and leading the ASA Equity and Action Cohort, as well as the district's Equity Work Group. Dr. Grant is married to Mr. Tony Grant, and they have five adult children and one grandson. She's a member of Mount Olive AME Church, where she serves as a steward, and she's also a member of the Columbia College Board of Trustees, where she most recently served as co-chair of the Presidential Search Committee. And I know that as a mother, there are little moments that make you proud, and so as a proud mom/grandma moment, your grandson was featured in one of the commercials during the Super Bowl on Sunday night, and it was so nice seeing his adorable little face there. And Dr. Grant is also a very kind and gracious person, kind every day, and so I always look forward to hearing from you. Without further ado.
Thank you so much, and good evening, Mr. Manning, our chair, board members, Dr. Davis. It's an honor to be here with you. Ms. Mackey, thank you so much for asking me to share the inspirational moment, especially since it is February and Black History Month. The national theme for Black History Month this year is the Black Family, Representation, Identity, and Diversity. And I hope that you have seen some of our district's information out on social media and that you're sharing a picture or a story under our hashtag #BHMFamChallenge. If you haven't done so, please go out and do so and share with us. And so I decided tonight, as I was thinking about inspiration, to share with you a family story that's inspirational to me. What you see up here is a picture of the grave marker for my great-grandmother, Ellen F. Richburg, who lived her life in South Carolina. She was born in 1865. Her son, my grandfather, Jay Haskell Richburg, was my mother's father, and my mother, Carrie Richburg Nelson, of course, my mother. That's how we get from Ellen F. Reagan, Ellen Reagan Richburg, who you see up here, to me, Helen Grant. I keep this picture in my phone, and I use it a lot when I'm talking with staff in the district. I especially use it when I'm talking with students. My children know the picture and know the story, because I've told it to them many, many times before. And I keep it as a reminder for a couple of different things. First, enslavement of Black people in this country was not that long ago. And our young people in particular sometimes need to be reminded that while it may seem, a couple of hundred years may seem like a long time, in generational history of families, it was not that long ago. The Emancipation Proclamation was issued in 1863, but the Civil War did not end until 1865, the year that my great-grandmother was born. I am only three generations from slavery in South Carolina. Some families have three generations that live together under one roof. At one time, when my mother was still alive, she lived with me. There were three generations in my household. Last night, we had dinner, and my son and his wife and grandson were with us, and I stood and I looked and thought, there are three generations of this family, all in one room, three generations removed from Ellen Richburg. I also keep the picture as a reminder that despite the trials, the difficulties and obstacles that Ellen must have faced, she grew up in Clarendon County, South Carolina. So you think about rural, post-Civil War environment, what that must have been like, black codes, inferior educational opportunities, oppression, segregation, just to name a few. And I, her great-granddaughter, graduated from high school, from college, and from law school. In fact, it wasn't despite those obstacles, but it was because of those obstacles that I can stand here today, and that's what makes me part of who I am. Couple of weeks ago, Dr. Shealy, when she was presenting to you with the Opportunity Knowledge Task Force, mentioned my father and paid me and my family great honor in sharing the story that he bought a bus when he was still young in order to pick up Black students in Clarendon County and take them to school, because the school system did not provide a bus. And Dr. Shealy, thank you for honoring my family that way. I'm going to share a little bit of a different story tonight, and I promise it won't be long. Both of my parents are from Clarendon County. My mother was a teacher in Somerton, South Carolina. She lost her teaching job when her father signed a petition asking for equal funding of schools. She was not even asking for integration at that point. It was just equal funding of the schools. And as you know, that was the preliminary work for the Briggs versus Elliott case, which went up to the US Supreme Court with the Brown versus Board of Education case. When my mother lost her job, she moved to Columbia and lived in South Carolina all of her life. Her oldest brother, my Uncle Joseph Richburg, worked in Somerton and lost his job for the same reason. His wife, my Aunt Gracie Richburg, taught in the same school district and lost her job for the same reason. Uncle Joe and Aunt Gracie moved to Baltimore, where they lived until they retired from jobs there, and did return to South Carolina, and amazingly so, Uncle Joe ran for school board and served on his school board of the same district that fired his wife, because my grandfather would not take his name off of a petition for equal funding of schools. My mother's sister, Eddie Richburg Alexander, was also a teacher in the same school system and also lost her job for the same reason. She moved to New York, never to come back to live in South Carolina, and was very adamant that she would not come back and live in the state because of what had happened to her. Despite obstacles, including those unequal schools, it's amazing that both of my parents graduated from Allen University. And these women that I've just told you about in rural Clarendon County all had college degrees in the 1950s. It's no wonder then that I am passionate about education. I believe that education does, for every child, what nothing else can do, and the importance of it cannot be underscored. So I'm committed to each student, every student, having what he, she, or they needs in order to find their pathways to purpose. As we celebrate back History Month 2021 and recognize the contributions to history and culture by Black people for all people, I hope that you too will be inspired by the many stories like the ones in my family. And my family is not unique. Each one of you could tell a story of someone who faced unimaginable obstacles that because of what they did, it made it possible for us to be here today. I can recommend to you this book, Stories of Struggle. It's by Claudia Smith Brinson, and it specifically talks about some of the struggles of South Carolinians in the 1950s and 60s in particular. Black history is not just for Black people. It's for all people. So tonight, I call the names of my ancestors, not just for me, but for you too, and for all of those who are listening at your home, in your schools, in your offices, on your phones, on your computer, whatever it is, whatever way that you're listening, it's for you too. Throughout this month and every day, let's celebrate the accomplishments and what they did that allows us to be here today. I hope that you all, board members, enjoy the bookmark and pen that I left on your table as a gentle and kind reminder that Black history is all of our history, and I hope that you will share with us throughout the month of February. And at this time, would you please stand and repeat with me the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grant, and I actually have the pen on already, so I appreciate it. Next, we will move on to approval of the agenda. If I can have a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the agenda for the February 9, 2021, meeting of the Richland II School Board of Trustees.
Motion made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Agostini.
Once again, I'd like to point out that I don't like to approve or I'm not in favor of Item 10.1, approval of the draft agenda. And last two weeks ago, that meeting was a perfect example, when we are supposed to be giving board members the opportunity to present something before the board for practice purposes, because this is not policy, to vote to get something added to the agenda. When I made a motion to have something added, there was no opportunity for a second, but more importantly, our board chair stated that he was able to make the decision because he had the capability to not put things on the agenda. So again, I think it's an unnecessary exercise. It's not policy, and I do believe it is a waste of time. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes, Dr. Davis.
I just want to state, because this is public record, and this is the second consecutive board meeting where your fellow board member has publicly stated about the process, I would just like to remind the board that this process was put in place as a result of Ms. Agostini's refusal to follow board policy, which allowed the superintendent and the board chair at the time, Mrs. Mackey, to set the board agenda. The board agenda meetings became very contentious, also to the point where I had to uninvite my staff for participating in board agenda meetings, so that they would not see the dysfunction and the lack of civility in those agenda-setting meetings. And so we put a process in place to be fair and equitable, to allow board members to suggest items to be placed on the agenda, and for those items to be seconded and then added to the agenda, taking actually some of the authority out of the board chair and the superintendent's realm of responsibility as per board policy, in order to try to appease members, to give them an opportunity to have items added to the agenda. And so this practice has now been, it is not in policy, but it is a practice that we put in place to give board members an opportunity to add items, but those items are now supported. Board members still have the opportunity to suggest items according to board policy to be added to the agenda. And those things have been considered by the chair and the superintendent, and items have been added at the suggestion of board members, or when board members suggested there should be certain things not placed on the agenda as a result of fail to communicate properly, or it may not be aligned with the expectations of our board agenda, whether it should be in executive session, those items have been removed, and those have come at the request of Ms. Agostini in the past. We recently received information regarding a request, and that information will be duly considered based on our board policy. So I just want to state for the record as well, not to give the impression that the board chair nor the superintendent is not giving board members an opportunity, but the actual reason why we have this place on the agenda is as a result of us not following the board policy and adhering to board policy when it relates to the board chair and the superintendent having the authority, under board policy, to consider items from the public and from the board members on what should be placed on the agenda.
And Dr. Davis, I'd also like to echo that in the past, it's been brought up that the board chair had the unilateral authority to do that, which our policy does allow board chair and superintendent to make final decisions on the agenda. And there are cases where we do have to make those decisions, because we're between board meetings, or there's items that need to be put on of importance. But this gives the full board much more input and say than had ever been done previously, and gives the board chair more feedback from the board on what they do or don't want to see. Certainly, there's some items that get added here and there, but for the most part, the agendas are set and board me. You get to see those two weeks ahead of time, which was never done prior to this process. So there's more transparency, more opportunity for input and feedback from the board. And I also want to remind board members that at the time of the approval of the agenda, the board has the authority to remove items from the agenda. If they feel that the board chair unnecessarily puts something on the agenda, the board can vote to have it removed. So I think that this makes it actually more of a board action than a chair action than any other time that I've seen in our past history, as somebody who's been on the board for 12 years.
Well, since we're making comments, may I make a comment?
Yes. Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Yes, because I'm the second-longest board member on, and I can recall that when a board member wanted to place any item on the agenda, it was automatically placed. We changed the policy where we indicated that in order to have something placed on a board, I'm sorry, on the agenda, it has to go through the superintendent and the board chair, which really is frustrating to me, because the superintendent works for the board, so why would the superintendent and a board chair have the decision to decide whether or not we get something on, especially with all of us being elected officials? It seems as if we should be able to put something on the board, because we represent not only the staff, faculty and staff, but we represent constituents. So we could be requesting to add something on per constituents from our district. So I think it is an unfair policy, and I would love to see us go back and maybe add this policy to the next agenda for discussion, because I think it should be changed where the superintendent and board chair decide what goes on the agenda, and allow the entire full board to make that decision and remove superintendent from that part, since the superintendent actually works for us.
And Dr. Elkins, I would say I actually remember that very differently than you do. I feel like there were many instances that you indicated you could not get items on the agenda, and that you felt the board chair blocked you from doing that, and that was another, one of the reasons why we put this policy.
Well, I don't want to prolong this, because we could always call other former board members, and they would agree with my comment, but I don't want to prolong this any further, so I'd like to move this to the next item on the agenda, please.
We can get to that motion when we get to the actual agenda setting later on in the meeting. At this point, we're having discussion on the agenda itself. I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on this particular?
Mr. Chair, I would just like to make a comment. It's very troubling to me what our superintendent has just said. I do not recall one meeting where we had a district employee other than the superintendent in to do a board meeting and I will say, or set an agenda. It was Dr. Elkins, myself, and Ms. Mackey. I don't argue with the point that at some points, it might have been contentious. I don't think I was the one creating it, but I do not recall ever having a board, or excuse me, a district employee in a meeting, having them be excused. And for the most part, for the five months that we were there, perhaps I attended three of the board agenda meetings, because most of them were canceled and done by the superintendent and board chair at the time, and simply, Dr. Elkins and I were not invited to those. So, thank you.
For a point of clarification, Mr. Chair and members of the board and to our community, for a point of clarification, we had board agenda-setting meetings following board meetings on Tuesday. Those board agenda-setting meetings were held at that time by Chairman Plank. We had so many board members who attended the board agenda-setting meetings at that point, that we had to ask board members to leave the board agenda-setting meeting, because we were in danger of having a quorum, because board members would not give the authority or allow the superintendent and the board chair, by board policy, the authority to set those agendas. At that time, we had staff that would participate in that to help answer any questions. When I became superintendent or assistant superintendent, the board superintendent, the board chair, along with the superintendent and executive team, met with the board chair to set the agenda at that time, at the invitation of the superintendent. I don't know if that was a practice that she adopted from a previous superintendent, but that was indeed the practice at that time. But it was only the board chair. And according, I don't know when the policy changed, but I'm looking at the history of the adoption of these policies from '78 to '89 to '97 to '03, '12, '17, and '19. I do know that our policy is aligned with the recommendation of the South Carolina School Boards Association, and in that policy, it clearly states that the board will follow the order of business set by the agenda unless, I'm sorry, it states that items may be suggested by board members, staff members, or the public to be considered for placement on the agenda, and the item must be within the scope of the board's duties, must be timely, and must be appropriate for consideration. The superintendent, in cooperation with the board chairman, will prepare the agenda for all meetings. The agenda will include items the board will address in performing the duties as governing body of the school district in accordance with board policy. The agenda will include references to the board policy where appropriate. That is our policy. That is the policy we continue to follow as an indication of items submitted by you today, Ms. Agostini, for consideration for a future board meeting, as well as my response that your items will be considered. This is in addition to give board members an opportunity to have items added in response to the concern that board members were being, were not being allowed to have items added. That's what this whole agenda, draft agenda for, we have always shared the draft agenda in this school district. We've never required a vote to approve it, but it was a result of allowing board members to add information and not be prohibited or not given the opportunity to voice what they would like to see on the agenda. We added this for the purpose, and I appreciate you stating, Mr. Manning, for transparency, so that the public can see the items that the board member is asking to be added to the agenda, because the information that's emailed to me is not necessarily transparent of a public knowledge. So the board member gets an opportunity to suggest items in public for public knowledge, and then can be supported or not supported by his or her fellow board members.
All right, final comments.
I call for the question, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Call the question. If everyone will please vote at this time.
Mr. Chair.
The question was called.
Yes, and when you call the question, in Robert's rules, you need to vote on the call of the question prior to voting on the motion before us.
Mr. Chair, that is correct.
Okay, well, let's take a vote on the call to question. All in favor of the call to question, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We will now vote on the motion in the second to approve the agenda. Zalena, did you send it? It didn't pop up for me. Oh, no, I revoted, never mind. My bad. Did it pass what? It passed, it can't pass six to one, five to one. That's okay, five to one. I apologize, I didn't see it pop up there. Motion passes five to one. Next, on our agenda is the consent agenda. If I can have a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the consent agenda for this evening's meeting.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second? Dr. Caution Parker's made the second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
In the minutes, the motions made by Dr. Elkins Johnson and myself for the draft agenda for this meeting were not included in the minutes.
Okay, do you have items that you would like to make a motion to see?
No, I just won't support it, because I don't have it written out. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Dr. Elkins.
I think what Ms. Agostini said, based on that email that I sent to you and Dr. Davis earlier today, mentioning the fact that as we reviewed the minutes from the last school board meeting, I noticed that they didn't have the information on with my motion that I made with Mrs. Agostini, second to have policy ADD added to the agenda. Am I correct?
Dr. Elkins, hold on one second. I think Dr. Davis is referring with staff, if you can give us just one second.
Okay, thank you.
I just have an opportunity to speak to the board secretary. The additions or the mission that we requested have been added to the board agenda. I don't think you can see it, because she's already populated, but you can make a motion to approve the draft, approve the consent agenda with the amendments recommended by Dr. Elkins Johnson to the superintendent, as well as Ms. Agostini, for those to be added to the minutes. So you can approve it with the amendment or the additions. You don't have to not approve the consent agenda.
Even with that, I would need a secondary motion, because the motion was for what's presented in the board in the second. So if somebody wants to make a secondary motion that addresses the alternate minutes, and I think for public record, we should indicate what those items are specifically.
We can get Zalena to read what she's added.
So, Zalena, if you'd like to read that, then somebody can make a motion, a secondary motion, to accept those changes within the minutes. Does she have a mic?
And please read it, as my name is Dr. Monica Elkins.
I can't understand you, Dr. Elkins.
I said, please have them to make their amendments, with my name as Dr. Monica Elkins, not Dr. Monica Elkins Johnson, please.
Okay. Are you saying, did I say that, or you're saying in the minutes?
No, she's saying in.
No, in the minutes.
In the minutes, I got you.
She wants to make sure her name is properly displayed.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's going to take some time, so.
It's what?
It's just going to take some time, because I got to pull everything up, so just give me a second.
Okay. Do you have, Dr. Davis, the requested changes?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
It's all of this referring to the emails that were sent, yeah, that we got.
They were, the ones that were sent today.
And so they were going to have to.
It has been, it just hasn't been presented to us, but staff looked at it, and the recommendations were accurate, but we don't have that reflected in front of us. And I, just to make sure that we're approving the right thing and that everybody's aware, I want to make sure everybody's aware of the changes that were requested, since I didn't have an opportunity to necessarily see that email or those changes, because they were sent in today. So, Zalena, I apologize for putting you on the spot. While that is going on, I, I would encourage the board, I, staff has worked diligently. We, we got on staff about making sure that we've received the material on time and they've been good about getting that to us. I would ask that we make a best effort to try to look at this material and have these types of changes sent as far ahead of time as possible. It makes it difficult when they're sent in the day of the meeting to necessarily get all of the changes reflected.
Well, I know that message is not for me because I'm one board member that reads the board doc every board meeting. Can't say that for everyone, but I'm one that most definitely looks at my board doc information.
Zalina, you ready? Okay.
Under section 9.1, I added, Dr. Monica Elkins asked to have a discussion on policy ADD added to the agenda for the next meeting. Motion by Monica Elkins, second by Lindsay Agostini. Final resolution, motion fails. Yes, Monica Elkins, Lindsay Agostini, LaShonda McFadden, no, James Manning, Amelia Mackey, Cheryl Caution Parker and Teresa Holmes.
Okay. So would somebody like to make a, a secondary motion to approve the minutes with that stated revision? Dr. Elkins, would you like to make the motion for that revision to be added to the minutes that are presented to us?
Sure. I'd like to make a, a motion that will approve the agenda with amended minutes added to it.
Motion's been made by Dr. Elkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McFadden. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, if you would please say aye or raise your right hand.
Aye.
Ms. Agostini, use your hand up. I can't see. No, okay. All right, all against? Anyone who would like to abstain?
You haven't against.
Oh, I hadn't opposed, okay. So motion passes. I don't even know if I can count. One, two, three, four, five, uh, five to one. All right. With that, we have a motion for the consent agenda. We have a second and we have the, the secondary motion that's included in that. Is there any further discussion? With that, we will take the vote on the motion and the secondary motion. This includes the secondary motion. Does that make sense, Zalina? So we basically were saying the, the motion that was approved and then the secondary motion is included in that. So the, the motion with approval of the secondary motion. Let me know, are you making a change to the actual motion that we have or are you good with making sure that that's right? Her, her motion was to approve the, the revision of the minutes.
Right, but for the original motion?
Uh, she didn't have another motion. That's the only other motion.
No, but, okay, so.
Huh? What original? Oh, the motion to approve the consent agenda was Ms. Mackey. Ms. Mackey.
What was her, what was Dr. Elkins, um, her vote for that?
For the original motion?
Yeah.
We haven't voted on the consent agenda motion yet. So we're voting now on the consent agenda and we're, it was, the motion was made by Ms. Mackey and seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. The secondary motion basically is an amendment to that primary motion. So we, we are, I'm sorry, this is the first time you've had to deal with secondary motion. So the motion itself is to approve the consent agenda, the one that you'll present to us. Approval of the consent agenda that includes the approval of the secondary motion is what we'll actually be voting on.
Just gonna hear both of you.
Okay. Okay. If, and Dr. Davis, if you'll make sure that we both look at that.
I, I, I understand, yes, sir.
Okay. So all in favor of the consent agenda that includes the secondary motion that was approved, raise your right hand or say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And Ms. Agostini, I can't see you, so.
I'm, I'm a no.
Okay, you're a no. Okay. So we have five yes, one no. Motion passes. All right. Next, we have public participation and I have no one signed up at this time. So we will move on to voting on executive session items. If I can have a motion on item 7.1, please.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Mackey.
A move that because of the addictive nature of vaping, the potential for serious health problems and other consequences for our students, the negative impacts on our schools, including having to address disciplinary and addiction, addiction issues. A move that we authorize the district to proceed with litigation against Jule and other responsible companies and that. Due to the unique nature of this lawsuit, we retain the following law firms on a contingency fee basis to represent the district in this litigation. Halligan Mahoney and Williams, P.A., Solomon Law Group, L.C. and Frazier, P.L.C.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Elkins.
Yes, I just have a few questions. I know some were addressed earlier, but I understand that we do want to be proactive with this vaping, but due to the lack of information that the district was able to provide, I'm not sure if I'll be able to support this. And the reason why I'm saying that, I asked two questions. One was, I asked the question as to what is the percentage or what is the data showing the amount of students that we've had concerns with vaping? And we don't have any research or any data to support that we have students or have any issues of that. My second concern is I was asking about the lawsuit. If we won, if we decided to become a part of the lawsuit and we won, how would the money be distributed? Would it be equally or would it be based on the number of cases per school district? And there was not an answer for that. Thirdly, I don't think we've had enough time to discuss this because my question would be if we became a part of this lawsuit and we were able to receive funding, how would that money be used? Will we use that money for teacher recruitment? Will we use that money for teacher salary or teacher bonuses? Or would we use that money for scholarships? And there have not been a, a steady answer to any of those questions. So at this time, I'm pretty sure that I would not be supporting this. Not that I don't want to be proactive, but because I don't have enough information before me.
Dr. Elkins, I, I just wanted to clarify. Your question number two that was asked, the question that was, the answer that was given by legal counsel to your question number two was that the proceeds would be divided based off of the, the quantity of the issue within each district. So what, the, the problems they were having, the cost associated with those problems and that that formula would be used to determine the distribution factor of the funds. So the districts with the greater needs would receive more money.
Right. And that's another concern that I have because if we don't have any issues or concerns with that, I truly don't want to receive funding that could actually go to school districts that could really utilize the money based on the cases that they have in their food district.
And, and for item number three, Dr. Davis indicated that staff would work with the board to determine depending on the amount of funds, if there was even funds that were distributed to us, that there would be discussion as to whether that was turned into a scholarship for students that went to, were in the medical field or whether it was used for education purposes or rehabilitation purposes and that the board would be involved in the discussion as to how any potential proceeds were used in the district, but that it would be in a way that was in line with the health concerns that were being addressed by the lawsuit.
And I guess my concern with that is if there is nothing written on paper, you can't always rely on what someone says. It's been proven that we can say one thing and then once it comes to distributing the funds or even making decisions, things change when it's not written down. So since we don't have anything in writing as to how we would utilize the funds, I will not be supporting it at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
Yes, and I, I concur with Dr. Elkins that we've not been shown any data on how this has impacted our students. And I'm hesitant to join in when it may have in fact have huge impacts on other districts. The fact that we've been shown no data on how it's impacted us, I've not heard, I'm not saying that it's not a problem, but I have not heard from a student. I've not heard from a teacher. I've not heard from a parent. I've not heard from an administrator that this is presenting a problem in our district. And if we are going to, you know, jump on the bandwagon of lawsuits, you know, I'd be more concerned, are we going to start joining in litigation against, say, clothing manufacturers? Because a bigger issue to me where we spend a lot more time is on dress code issues than on Jules. So I am not inclined to support this. Thank you.
All right. Other board members, comments or questions?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
Just to indicate that, that everyone has to vote their conscience, I think as, as we were, as Dr. Davis explained to us, and I'm sure he, maybe he can reiterate that in executive session when we had an opportunity to ask questions as well, is it's, it's, there's a bigger issue. I know at the national school board conferences that I've attended the last couple of years in state, there was, there was an emphasis on students being addicted to smoke, to being smoking and Jule and, and the implications that make it so addictive. There are lots of, of educational opportunities we've had along the way to educate ourselves. And at the end of the day, you vote pro or you, you vote yea or you vote nay. I, I have heard from a teacher and from a parent and from a principal who had concerns with regard to this, but it's not about me. It's about the board and it's about a collective issue, what voting your conscience and it's about natural implications. It's not about just me and what I've heard. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, just, just to, again, I, I feel, I'm not sure how I should feel, whether or not my integrity was being questioned about when I say something, am I being truthful? But I, I'd rather not lean to that without getting clarification privately from, from the board member who questioned whether or not what is said by administration is actually followed up. But I do try to act in the most, in, in the most integrity, with the most integrity that I possibly can and, and be a person of high character. And so if I do state that the funds from, the proceeds of the funds from this lawsuit would be put aside or used to educate our students on the dangers of vaping, whether they'd be used in providing scholarships for students who decide to go into health, the healthcare profession, I would hope that my word would speak for itself and my honesty would speak for itself and that, that that would not be questioned in a public format without me knowing that there's concerns about whether or not what this administration shares with the board gives a board member pause. Secondly, I felt like I had addressed all of those questions and concerns adequately in the executive session for board members and stood ready to answer an additional, an additional questions that may not have been clearly answered as stated by Dr. Elkins. Indeed, we have not have any data or research specifically about how many students in our district are using vape, vaping or using Jules specifically. But as I also shared and shared, we have taken on and passed and approved policy without using data necessarily. Whether we passed a policy on putting a, a policy in place regarding students being transported in staff's car. We didn't ask a question of how many students are being transported in staff's cars? How many accidents have we had? What do we see the potential accident being? We took a proactive measure because we realized that there was some concern there and so we wanted to put some measures in place to keep our students safe. Sometimes as leaders, and we are the fifth largest district in the state, sometimes you take on issues and lend your voice so that those who don't have a voice can have the strength to do so. And so we wanted to join the collective group of individuals or collective group of school districts who are saying, we believe Jule, or we believe vaping is wrong and we want to do something about it. And we want to stand up. It's not always about us and about how it impacts us specifically. And I'm, and I'm sure I'm not telling the board anything that they don't know. And sometimes you have to be the one to step out and say, we're going to take a stance and a position on this matter because it is of great concern to the health and well-being of children in the state of South Carolina. We have a big seat at the table in Richland School District Two and we have to step up to the big seat at the table. One of the things that we were, were asked upon this administration is to help the board be more involved in legislative issues. This is an issue that will be legislated and we're stepping up to the plate. So to question now whether or not this is the right thing to do because it may not impact us more than it impacts someone else, I think is a position that we can't afford to take as a leader in the state of South Carolina. And so again, administration made this simple recommendation to the board for us to be a part of this and we should stand ready, should the board approve it or we stand ready, should the board not approve it, to move forward with the business of the school district.
Ms. Mackey.
Mr. Chair, just, just to be clear.
Ms. Mackey and then Dr. Elkins.
Just to be clear, the one of the, the part of the language of the motion indicates it would be a contingency fee basis, which means it does not cost the district anything whether we win or lose and it's not about us. It's a collective, hence the word, class action.
Dr. Elkins.
I just want to add something to what Dr. Davis said. I appreciate this information about the us and then a voice. I've been a voice for the voice for so long, 30 plus years. So I truly understand that. But I also understand that Richland District Two is a data-driven school district because we are a premier school district. And as far as Dr. Davis is concerned, he's always talking about the numbers. He's always talking about the data to get us to be supportive on whatever issue he has. So I don't have a problem with being proactive and being supportive. However, it's hard to support something when you don't have the data in front of you. And also, you can't jump on a bandwagon with every lawsuit or class action suit. Based on the informations that the attorney shared, there are only five school districts who are a part of this lawsuit. And Dr. Davis, you can sign in if you like, but I think we have 42 school districts. So we're talking about less than half of the districts in the state of South Carolina. So if I had more information and I had something to compare it to, I would be more than happy to be supportive, but I can't support something in the dark. And back to questions about, we had ample time to ask questions in executive session. I asked my questions in executive session, but again, I'm going to keep reminding you guys, I was voted in by the constituents. They want to hear the questions and the answers as well. So as a leader, I will ask my questions in executive session and I will also come back and ask my same questions in the public session. So everyone can be involved and know exactly what's going on because as a voice, I would express my voice and I have that right to ask questions in general session as well as the public session. Thank you.
And Dr. Elkins, I don't think anybody had issue with the questions you asked. My, my comments were the question, the answers that were given to your questions that I wanted to make sure were, were represented completely and appropriately as they were answered in executive session.
Right, but I wasn't referring to you, Mr. Manning, but I guess I touched the sore spot with you because you responded, but thank you.
And I, I want to remind this board, we support a lot of legislation that our legislature puts forward and we don't always understand completely the impact to the district on a numeric basis in, in many ways. And in fact, when we talk about things that sometimes hurt the district, we supported some of the legislation that would change funding for schools in which case it would actually reduce our budget and we at, wholeheartedly supported that with the legislature for benefit of other school districts in the state. So with that, if we can please take the vote. And Dr. Davis, remind me on the tie.
The motion fails. It's fifth.
And so motion fails, three yes, three no. All right. We will now move on to 7.2. We don't have any further action from executive session. Item 8.1, report superintendent's highlights, Dr. Davis. highlights, Dr. Davis.
Mr. Man, I ask that you give us an opportunity to review if the motion failed or the motion passed based on the way the motion was stated, to ensure that the motion was stated in affirmative and is a support, but it did not gain enough votes to pass. And so I, I think Ms. Agostini is correct, but we would like to reserve the opportunity to, to review that before that is permanently recorded.
Okay, that's fine.
Again, I think the board for this dispirited discussion regarding the jewel lawsuit, and again, as I stated, this administration will accept the will of the board by your authority to vote. And so if this, indeed, this policy does not pass, we will move forward. Tonight, we have our superintendent highlights. And tonight, our highlights will start out with a reminder. So a little bit about the 4K application. If you have a child who will be four on, or before September the first, don't miss out on the chance to apply for the district's four-year-old kindergarten program. The deadline is March 26. And Richland Two Center for Child Development offers free 4K development classes to students who qualify based on developmental readiness, free or reduced price meal status, or other risk factors. Please visit the district website for more information. I am pleased to tell you about several other awards and honors that have been, that we're celebrating. So we'll start out with signing day. Colleges and universities across the country are eagerly awaiting the arrival of some of the district's most talented student athletes. Twenty-four young men and women signed last week to play collegiate sports. These students received 18 football scholarships, four track and field scholarships, one soccer, and one volleyball scholarship. Some schools that offer scholarships to our students include the United States Military Academy at West Point, South Carolina State University, Coastal Carolina University, Benedict College, Livingston College, Limestone College, and Newberry College. If you hadn't had an opportunity to be aware, made aware of the U.S. Presidential Scholars Program candidates, we have two here in Richland School District Two. Ridgeview High School senior Emily Addington and Spring Valley High School senior Tahara Islam have been named candidates in the U.S. Presidential Scholars Program. The program. The program recognizes and honors some of our nation's most distinguished graduating high school seniors. Each year, 161 seniors are given the honor and, the honor and presented with a medallion. R2I2 Technology Awards. Doors to careers in technology are opening for several students at the Richland Two Institute of Innovation Student Center. Four students are being recognized by the South Carolina Affiliate of the National, of National Center for Women in Information Technology with Aspirations in Computing Awards. Spring Valley High School junior Jasmine, Spring Valley High School junior Jasmine Maltavoe and Blackwood High School senior ER Santiago Vlasquez, Vlasquez, I'm sorry, received the 2021 South Carolina Affiliate Rising Star Award. Ridgeview High School junior Faith Aiken was named a regional winner, and Arrow Parker, a senior at Blackwood High, received an honorable mention. These students were enrolled in 3D printing and design, Next Energy Engineering, and Apple App Development classes at R2I2 Institute of Innovation. The CEO, School CEO feature. School CEO, the School Marketing Magazine is featuring Richland Two in this month's February edition of the digital publication. The article is about tools to use to consistently market your districts, to consistently market your district. Our short, catchy tagline premier starts here, and the district's consistent usage of it earned us a spot in the magazine. Additionally, I had the privilege to discuss on CEOs, on School CEOs podcast last November, the Premier 100 Initiative to recruit and retain 100 men of color to the teaching profession. Bridge Creek Elementary School principal Kirsten Eubanks, Kristen Eubanks, and Marybeth Galrez, data coordinator and registrar at Lake Carolina School, Elementary School Upper Campus, received high honors this past weekend at the annual conference of the South Carolina Association of Educational Office Professionals. Ms. Eubank was named Educational Administrator of the Year, and Ms. Galrez received the Educational Office Professional of the Year Award. Congratulations. Rookie Teacher of the Block, Caitlin Jones of Rice Creek Elementary School, first grade teacher, is the January 2021 winner of the Rookie Teacher of the Block Award. The award is sponsored by the district partner H&R Block. Rookie teachers of the block receive several gifts, including a plaque and a nameplate to hang outside of their doors. Prior to teaching first grade at Rice Creek, Jones graduated magna cum laude from the University of South Carolina with a bachelor's degree in early childhood education with a focus on urban education. She is the co-recipient of the 2020 Donald H. Graves Award for Excellence in the Teaching and Writing, in, I'm sorry, Excellence in the Teaching and Writing presented by the National Council of Teachers of English. USC Diversity Council, two Richland Two employees have been named to the University of South Carolina's Office of Undergraduate Admissions Diversity Advisory Council. They are Mary Paige Boyce, who is our Director of College and Career Initiatives, and Zafaria Little, Project Director for the Gear Up Program. It's February, and there are celebrations. There is a lot to celebrate in February. It's American Heart Month, and for the first time, Richland Two kicked off the Principals with Heart fundraiser. Thirty-nine teams in Richland Two are raising funds and awareness for this important cause. Our district goal is $60,000. So please join us by joining a team. Following the tradition of celebrating Black History Month, Richland Two will recognize people who have shown unique and significant contributions to Black history and culture in the areas of art and music, education, public service, which includes social justice, health, science, technology, and engineering. Video segments about Black history and traditions that exemplify the national theme of the Black family, representation, identity, and diversity will be shared with students, parents, and employees. Using our website and social media platforms, we will again recognize individuals from the Richland Two community who have demonstrated unique and significant contributions to Black history and culture. Our Black History Month virtual program will be held Monday, February the 22 at 6:00 p.m. Check the district's website for the viewing link. And last week, February 1 through the 5th, was School Counselor Week. Thank you to all of our school counselors for the amazing work that you do for providing necessary guidance to our students. This week, if you don't know, is Bus Driver Appreciation Week. So we want to give a big shout out to our bus drivers, and thank you for transporting our students to and from school safely. And in addition to that, February is also National Magnet School Month. And if you did not know, Richland Two has 39 magnet programs, 17 of them which are nationally certified. And of those nationally, of those 17 nationally certified magnet programs, eight are demonstration schools, which is the highest honor and recognition. This makes a second in the nation behind Miami Dade, which is the nation's fourth-largest school district with over 356,000 students. So lots of awards, lots of recognition for the month of February. Congratulations to all, all of you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Mackey.
Davis, just so they can have a chance to hear, have their names heard, Dr. Davis, the, the two U.S. Presidential Scholars, I was listening for their names, but you got interrupted, so we couldn't hear their names. Is it possible for you to share their names? I think it might have been the first or second page. It was the U.S. Presidential Scholars candidates.
Emily Addington at Spring Valley High School, and Tahara Islam from, I'm sorry, Emily is from, Addington is from Ridgeview High School, and Tahara Islam is from, is a senior at Spring Valley.
Thank you. Just wanted to give a chance to have their names heard. Thank you, Dr. Davis.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
I just want to express how sorry I am to the whole board, and particularly to Superintendent Dr. Davis. I was trying to pull up a policy on my computer as he was speaking, and I'm not sure what I found, but it made a lot of noise. And for those who know me, I don't know how to operate my computer and couldn't turn off the, the volume button. So again, I'm very sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we'll move on now to, actually, the highlight of the night, I think, other than all the awesomeness that's going on in the district, our capital improvements, the Performing Arts Center. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and to our view, and to our public. We have with us this evening our architects and our team that's providing, will provide information for you regarding our Performing Arts Center. And again, I want to take this opportunity before Mr. Anderson invites our guest over to speak, to thank our public for supporting the bond referendum of 2018.
Yes.
Which is, of course, the largest bond referendum in the history of the state of South Carolina. Our children and students in this district well deserve that, and I want to thank the board for all of its support in supporting that bond referendum. And as a result of that, we're going to get this spectacular Performing Arts Center for the community in Richland School District Two. Mr. Anderson?
Well, thank you, Dr. Davis. You took a little bit of my thunder, but I think you do that much better than I do. So I, you always are, are much better with words than myself. So thank you all for letting us be here this, this evening. This is, of our, of our 80 projects, we are taking the opportunity tonight to highlight this one, being the first Performing Arts Center in Richland Two in Northeast Columbia, and we're super excited about this project. So with us here tonight, we have the architect team of Millen, Paston, Smith. They're the same team, well, some of the same members, but same company that's doing our stadiums right now. And so very happy to have Ben Thompson, Carrie Perkins, and Peter Nielsen here to give us a little deep dive for that, and then we'll answer any questions that you may have. So Ben, I'll turn it over to you.
Greetings, members of the board, superintendent, staff, guests. It is definitely an honor and a pleasure to be with you this evening. And like Dr. Davis said, this is a very exciting project, not only for our team, but I know for your community as well. So we're going to go through where we are in this product, in this project tonight, and set forward the wheels of motion for the rest of the project as well. So with any good project comes a good team. And I can't say enough about our team that we've, that we have for this project. Again, I'm Ben Thompson, the, the principal in charge for the project, overseeing its vision, its delivery. But also joining that team are Carrie Perkins as the project manager. Carrie has a lot of experience with performing arts centers from the mountains down to the coast in South Carolina and beyond, of course. And Peter Nielsen is the project architect, taking that vision and really turning it into a dynamic space, really turning that vision into reality through the architecture that, that we have to present in front of you. First and foremost, it has been, it's been wonderful working with Dr. Davis, the leadership team, the executive staff here at R2I2, as well as select teachers and members of, of the staff more broadly, to really define the vision of this facility. We know and understand the types of performances that are going to be part of this facility, and it's going to be wide-ranging, from small group performances all the way up to large group performances, both for students, schools, and, and the community at large. We, we know that the placemaking of this facility here on the R2I2 campus is very important, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later this, later as we, as we kind of go through it. But we understand that it needs to be identifiable and iconic as part of, as part of that vision for what this facility is going to be overall. That does not decrease its need to be completely functional. And our, and your staff has been really good at letting us know how performers work, how performances should work, and all the venues that need to be attached to a, a facility just like this. So really, one of the last things that we ask when we come to the visioning side of that is, is really, how do you want to feel, how, when you visit the site? How do you want to feel when you visit a performance there? And, and time and time again, your staff and those that are involved in the, in the project said they want to be engaged as part of discourse, as part of the arts, really want to be uplifted and inspired by this facility, and really want to have a visually stimulating part that, that can be representative of the commitment that art, that Richland School District Two has to both fine arts and the performing arts. So with that, we'll, we'll go through a sequence of slides, starting here with, with the site. I'll turn it over to Carrie Perkins to walk through that side.
Thank you. Well, we all recognize this, the, the R2I2 building and, and campus that we're on as existing. And here's our proposal. So where we, where we propose situating the building is toward, toward the rear corner of the site. So as you face R2I2 off to the left. And the idea there is, is really a, a product of studying probably four to six different locations around the property, trying to find the best place for the approach to the building. So it's a welcoming building, it's iconic, as Ben mentioned, but it also allows for loading, so that as we have large trucks toward the back to bring in set pieces and materials, that that's toward the back of the building, out of the public view, and it's efficient and easy for that to, to occur. But also where we impact the existing parking the least. So we are actually impacting parking a bit, but we're able to replace it and add to the parking. So there's a net add of parking spaces on the property as a result of the project. And then we're also able to handle the stormwater runoff. So we're showing a detention pond here that handles the additional square footage capable, you know, for the stormwater runoff there for the building. This is a little bit dark, but it's a sneak preview of what that approach might look like. So as Ben mentioned, we want this to be inviting. So as people pull into the, the entry drive from Fashion Drive, we want it to just pull people in all the way to that back corner. So as you get closer to the building, it starts to really unveil itself to the visitor. So we'll show you more of these views here in a second. As we look at the planning of the building, the idea of functionality is really key. So the overall floor plan is really designed around that. It's really a diagram for how the building wants to function. So what we're showing here in these different colors are the zones of the building. So we're trying to make the most efficient floor plan we can, so that it's easy, it's easy to know where to enter, it's easy to make your way around the building, and it's easy for large groups of people backstage to move around and do what they need to do during a performance. So in the, in the purple color here is really, these are really the front-of-house spaces. So the lobby here, also concession and ticketing, some office and meeting space, public restrooms on both sides of the lobby. We've all been rushing to the bathroom during intermission of a show, and know that it's good when everyone is not running all in the same direction. So we're trying to make that efficient as well. In, in the green are the performance spaces. So the big main stage theater with the fly tower, orchestra pit, and then also a rehearsal hall that can serve as a small performance venue in and of itself. So it might, you might think of it as a small black box theater. It could also be a place for rehearsals and for small, you know, individual performances. And then in the blue are the back-of-house spaces. So the, the support spaces like dressing rooms, green rooms, scenery storage, scene shop, all of those things that need to function very efficiently during a show and to serve the, to support the, the stage. On the second floor is the upper level of the seating, so a balcony level, and then a little bit of additional restrooms up at the upper level. What's not shown here is that there is a bit of space below grade, not so much a basement, but just where the orchestra pit goes down, there is handicap access to that orchestra pit from a lower level. So there will be some excavation on site for that level as well. All right. Peter gets to talk about the pretty pictures.
So it's one thing to kind of look at what this can be and plan, but we're all visual people. And so to kind of understand like what this is, I think these are pretty, pretty good way of looking at that. So as Ben mentioned, and one of the things is iconic. And how do you, how do you really make a building that way when it's tucked in the corner of the site? It was put in the corner side for very specific reasons, for a lot of constraints on the site. However, you still want to be very inviting from Fashion Drive. So I apologize, it's not coming super clear on this image right here, but this is kind of view from Fashion Drive with R2I2 on the right. Thank you. And so as you get closer to the Performing Arts Center, one thing that we really want to focus on is performance, Performing Arts Center. So what is performance? It's all about movement, and movement always has a frame of reference. And we really want the building itself to be a performance. We want to celebrate all the different types of, oh, there we go, beautiful, all the different types of performances that you have in the space. Dance recitals, music performances, lectures, whatever it is, the whole building itself is a stage for whatever is happening at that time. So as you're getting closer to the Performing Arts Center, this kind of view of it, you can sort of see, there's a little bit of activity that kind of builds up to as you're coming up through the drive. And right as you get to the front door, then you really start to feel the energy of what's happening in that space, whether it's lit up for a Christmas performance, or just a A&amp;O type performance. A&amp;O type performance that's at the end of the semester. Whatever it is, you really want to start to feel that energy and understand that this is a very special place for the district, and it really celebrates all the activities that your students and staff and faculty all have within this building. Again, framing what that space is, looking into the lobby, perhaps that front space in front of the performing arts is its own stage itself. So using the building in the same way that you would the stage within the building as well. So that's kind of a view from the front of the performing arts center. And what's it like, look like during the day? Obviously, a lot of performances are at night, but you have to still look at a building during the day, so that's kind of what it'll kind of feel like as you're coming up to it. Again, getting down to that pedestrian scale, understanding that you really know what's going on, it's a building that really celebrates what those concepts are and builds up excitement. And this view is actually, if you were to walk out those doors right there, go right to the stairwell, that's actually what you would see from that view. So it's kind of understanding of contextualizing in the site, starting to see what that, the full fly loft looks like from a distance. From the ground level, it's not as pronounced, obviously, but the further away you get is visible, but we try to keep it as nice and clean as possible. And again, as you leave the site. So that's what the PAC looks like from the evening.
So based on that vision that we kind of developed right there at the beginning of the project, fulfilling the parts of that vision, obviously, are very important of the design. Iconic within the context of this campus, there was a clear decision made to use some of the same material here on the R2I2 building, but this building, because of its nature, because it is jointly shared by all schools in the district, needed an identity of itself. It needed to be different in some ways from the R2I2 building. But it is a good neighbor. It does have all of the, all of the features from a material standpoint that we see on this campus already, already present. So we are very excited about the development so far. We have made it past the schematic design level, which is our first big milestone for this project. In fact, for the Office of School Facilities, our first review of that happens at the end of this week. So we're excited about making that fulfilling on, on that side of it as well. We'll continue to develop this facility going forward as we look at developing that design and certainly the construction documents that go alongside of that. We do have a construction manager at risk for this project, HG Reynolds out of Aiken, which has been a tremendous partner as we've developed the, not only the, the design, but also being able to be critical and thoughtful about the materials that go into it, the cost of those materials and systems, and really being able to, to add as a team member some really good discussion and dialogue along, along the way. So we're looking forward to continuing that. We are doing due diligence right now on this site with a series of geotechnical explorations, and we'll continue to do our analysis as dictated by the design as it progresses. One of those key features is we're focusing tonight on obviously the exterior of the building, the iconic nature of the building. Next big step from that design development standpoint is the visioning of what goes on on the inside of this building, how we, how we look and take that, that vision that we first started with and implement not on the exterior, but on the interior, some of those functions as well. So we'll be diving into that side of it. Just as we kind of think about the inside of that building, we haven't really thought about the materiality, we haven't really thought about the lighting, we haven't thought about those features. That will all come next, but as an important next step, we wanted to just share with you at least how that feels on the inside, whether it be small bench seating over there on the left for viewers as they're, as they're waiting to go into that theater, or it be how does the concession works, or how does that big atrium-like space feel? So as we begin to talk about the interior visioning of this facility, all of those things begin to come into focus, and we really get the opportunity to divine, to define this project, not only interior but exterior, and make it absolutely a first-rate facility for, for this school district overall. With that, I'd be glad to answer, and team would be glad to answer any questions that the board may have.
Board members' questions or comments?
Just a comment on the, I appreciate the effort that you've put into designing and presenting to us this evening. I like this, just a comment. I like the fact that the structure of the building is very complimentary to the structure here so that it flows, and the functionality, of course, is, goes without saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Ms. McFadden?
Yes, I would like to say I'm very excited about this performing arts facility that is coming, and I do have a question, will it be available for all of the community to use?
As we've talked about it, as we've developed that, there have been lots of discussions about that. When, when is the right time for it to be used for school versus, versus community? And what, what the district has really endeavored is to put a master scheduling into the, the thought of events as they come into play. So with the focus being on school and school performances, certainly, but using that during the day, how do you really approach it at night? And I think we're early on in that discussion, but I think as that develops even further as we move along the project, you'll see some, some activity around being able to say when community events can happen versus when school events may happen.
Ms. McFadden, it will be a part of the facilities of the school district, just as R2I2 is and the conference center, the gyms at school. So it will be a facility that will be, that the public will have access to through rental, as well as the at-large community as well. The idea was to try to create a space, not only for our students to have performing arts space here in the district that was, that was a, an outstanding premier facility, but it also solved a couple of the problems. It allowed Richland Northeast to have their auditorium back because they were using, their auditorium was considered the district auditorium, it was the only high school's auditorium that was being shared by multiple schools throughout the district, particularly elementary schools, middle schools, as they were having various performances. It also will provide us with an opportunity to host some events here at the district level, as well as maybe some individual contractors who would like to contract the use of that facility for, for plays or performances around, in, in this particular area. We have a lot of relationships with dance recital companies, piano recitals, all types of things that require the space can be utilized for. So we're really excited about what it will offer this, offer the northeast portion of Columbia.
Thank you.
Thank you. I too, very excited about the project. I think it looks phenomenal. Y'all have done a great job with the design. I mean, I hate to say it looks performing artish, but it's like, like you said, I mean, you know when you see a performing arts center, and certainly looks like that, and the pictures were amazing, just the, the light of facility, very welcoming, inspiring. I mean, I can tell that it's certainly a place where creativity is encouraged, and you haven't even finished on the inside yet, so you still have that work to do. My, my only ask is, can you make the seats for big guys on the inside? I mean, I know that's like, you got to have enough seats and all that, but us, us big guys would appreciate a little breathing room when, when we sit down. So my only request, if we can fit that in there.
There are a mix of seats available in this facility.
Thank you. Otherwise, I mean, it really is exciting. It's great to have a program like this and to show that this district celebrates arts as much as we celebrate athletics or academics or any of the other talents that our students have. So thank you for being a partner with us on the project, and we look forward to continuing to work with you as this develops into a real place that we can all come and visit one day.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, and thank you for helping us with our protocols of white down and all in this COVID world. All right, next we have a legislative update, item 8.3, Dr. Davis.
Chairman Manning, members of the board, and to our viewing community. Ms. Libby Ruth, our senior director for communications, will come forward to deliver the legislative update for your information. Ms. Ruth?
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Dr. Holmes is the chair, as you all know, of the ad hoc committee, and she couldn't be here tonight, and I had put this together, decided I would just run over, run through it with you. What, you had the report that was in the board docs, and so what I thought I would do tonight is just try to update you as best I can, because we put together this report like Wednesday, Thursday of last week, and a lot has changed. I spent a lot of my day multitasking, watching the Senate in session over one of the big resolutions. So I'm just going to go through what has updated or changed, and skip over some of these first things, because as far as I know, they are still where they are in, in the House or the Senate. So getting to the first thing that really is probably one of the things that's on most everybody's minds is this S516, which is a joint resolution to require teachers and school support staff to be added to Phase 1A of COVID-19 vaccination plan. And I was, not being rude, I was actually listening to the Senate after our meeting started, because they went, and they may still be in session, but as of 6:35 tonight, they gave third reading unanimously to S516 with some amendments. And I'm going to summarize the amendments, but just know that you, I don't, where I, when I watch the Senate, I'm not able to see the actual amendments in writing, so I'm, I'm going based on what I heard, and I will get confirmation on all of this for you, but I believe that the amendment was to move teachers, instead of doing what this one called, which was to, originally was to pause everybody and then get everybody vaccinated. The amendment is just to include teachers now into Phase 1A. There was a lot of discussion today about people, senior citizens who already had appointments, and there was concerns expressed on the Senate floor about having those appointments have to be canceled if the bill passed as it was, which was, would make, de-hack, pause what they were doing. So this was to address that and to include teachers in 1A, but not mandate that, that everything had to stop to get, get teachers vaccinated. They would become part of 1A, which right now, you know, they're 1B, that school districts would have to offer in-person instruction in the manner in which they did prior to the closing of school districts due to COVID by the Monday after their spring break, and that school sites could be used designated as sites for vaccination. And that was in the discussion, comments that I know has gone, have been discussed about trying to get school nurses trained to deliver the vaccines, because a lot of people believe and have said that that would help increase the rate that we could get teachers vaccinated. So that did receive third reading with some amendments, and I will confirm those amendments for you and get an update out to you. So now it goes to the House. We had this K-12 Subcommittee, House Education and Public Works Committee. One of the initial bills that that Subcommittee took up, H3465, has, they have adjourned debate as the author of the bill asked them to do that, and they were going back to work on the language of that bill with the State Department of Education. Some questions came up from SCASA about the existing legislation and how this change would affect that. But they actually met today on Bill's H3588, which is related to adding a requirement that for seniors to be eligible for life scholarship. In addition to the requirements that are already in place for that, they would have to earn one credit of English and one credit of mathematics or computer science to be eligible for life scholarship, and they'd have to earn that credit in their senior year. The discussion around this was a lot of times, what I think the people, the sponsors of the bill and those who support it say that a lot of times seniors, they take those English classes and those math classes, and then their senior year actually don't end up taking any, and they get to college, and they're not as successful in English and math college courses. So this would require them to have one credit of English and one credit of math or computer science in their senior year in order to be eligible for life scholarship, along with the other requirements for the life scholarship. And I actually went ahead and put a call into our career and college and career coordinator, Mary Paige Boyce, and let her know that that bill was reported out favorably, favorably to the full House Committee today. Also reported, reported out favorably with amendments is Bill H3610, and that is, yep, sorry, that's why I don't have these on there, because they were just here today, I confused myself, sorry. H3610, that is the bill that regards to the takeover of school districts. It was amended with two amendments that, again, I don't had, was not able to get in writing, so I can't summarize those for you. I was watching this and the Senate at the same time, so I got a little schizophrenic, I think, in my, in keeping up with everything, and wasn't able to monitor that, but I'm getting those amendments in writing. Also reported out favorably was Bill H3332, which is basically the establishment of a study committee to look at, requires the State Department to form a study committee to look at incorporating media literacy skills in our standards. No update on the Early Childhood Subcommittee, and also no update on the K-12 that I know of right now, of the K-12 House Ways and Means Committee. The Senate Education Subcommittee, they were scheduled for a meeting, they are scheduled for a meeting tomorrow to take up S203, S16, and S38 and S208, and those are multiple bills. I'll tell you, and when we get to the end of the presentation, how you can find that agenda on a very useful app, and you can see what those bills are, but I just got that agenda today to look at. So again, the Senate Education Committee will be meeting tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. Some new things that came up, and these links are for your, the calendars, and you can pull up some of this information as well. Two, the Senate Finance K-12 Education Committee, Senate Finance K-12 Education Committee was scheduled to meet at 3:00 p.m. today, but that was, ended up being postponed because the Senate, like I said, was still in session as of 6:30 this evening, and they were going to have a discussion about budget adjustments for virtual and hybrid learning models, which, methods which were, I was not able to get much information on what that meant. I did ask some representatives with School Boards Association and PTSA, but wasn't able to get any details. They were also looking at, going to look at H3608, which is Charter School District Funding, and H3609, which that is the teacher salary, which deals with giving the salary steps from last year and that one lump sum payment. So they were supposed to take that up, so that bill, that meeting will have to be rescheduled. Also, there's a Judiciary Senate Committee that was going to meet today, but it's been postponed, and there are two bills that they are taking up that we want to keep our eyes on. One is a tort reform, and mainly the reason why we want to watch that is there would be a fiscal impact if they raised the limit of how much someone could get in a civil lawsuit. It could cause our insurance rates to go up, which I'm sure would make, raise Dr. Miley's ears back there. And then there is also S147, which is your Safe Harbor Act for the COVID lawsuits. So this would help protect state agencies, school districts, if we were to get lawsuits that related to COVID. And so I will get all this updates that have happened this week in, in the Friday update that we send to the board. And that's.
Board members' questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
Just a comment, thank you, Mrs. Ruth, for that, for that update. There are lots of moving parts with regard to the legislative, so don't, don't apologize for being scattered, there's a lot going on right there. Thank you also for, as always, embedding those links so that we can find the information we want to get to, but I just want to thank you for that information, and the fact that we're getting updates in, in a very fluid manner every week, instead of when something big is about to happen, allows us to make an impact or have our opinions heard along the way, not just when it comes to the floor to a full body vote. So thank you so much. I know that's a lot, so thank you so much for that, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. I'm glad to do it, and I enjoyed, I think, watching the Senate today. It was very eye-opening, it was the first time I really sat and watched the Senate. I did forget to mention, if you have a smartphone, you want to look for the app called the SC Legislature App, and it is very useful. I discovered it last week, and they started advertising on their website. I'm able to track bills, follow meetings, was, that's how I was watching the Senate or listening to the Senate when we first started. So I recommend that if you haven't downloaded that app, please do, if you want to kind of keep abreast, you can pick which bills you want to follow and get updates as they are updated.
Thank you, Ms. Agstini.
Mr. Chair, thank you, and thank you, Ms. Ruth, for your presentation. Regarding S516, I've heard from a lot of teachers and educators asking as a board member for me to be an advocate for them, and I'm sure, I would think that the other board members have as well, and I think we are being advocates, but I
But I want to encourage all those educators that want to be put into one A to call their members of the General Assembly when they're reaching out to us and saying, I'm speaking, you know, for tens or hundreds of other teachers. You need to get those tens or hundreds of other teachers to call your members of the General Assembly to advocate because they're going to be the ones that ultimately, you know, make the decision. So please call us, we'll advocate for you, but please call your General Assembly as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Caution Parker.
I have a question, Libby. I don't know if you're going to be able to answer or not, but, you know, when I see everything about the vaccinations and everything, putting teachers at the forefront, now when we're talking about teachers, we are talking about the entire school collectively. Am I correct?
Yes, I'm sorry. That was, that was reiterated
That was not made clear.
Multiple times, teachers and school support staff. So that was, I apologize for just saying teachers.
Oh, no, 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 because every time, you know, anytime you hear that, you know, it's always teachers, you know, I definitely support the teachers. But I'm just thinking that looking at school as a whole, and you know, and I don't know what we could do about making sure that people understand that.
Yes, that's in, that's in the legislation. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Mackey.
Just wanted to say too that as far as the Richland County delegation goes, Richland County delegation is very much in support of teachers being prioritized with regard to the vaccine. So while we're contacting our legislators, we could thank them as well because the Richland County delegation is very much on board with what the teachers want.
So I have a question, and you may not be able to answer it, but since you've been listening, maybe you can. But so when they say go back to the way we were, does that mean they're asking us to no longer social distance, have all the PPE and Plexiglas, or, because we, if we go back five days a week and we mandate that, we do not have enough room to social distance?
I think right now, Mr. Chair, that what they're asking for is for every school district to offer five days a week as an option for parents, not to mandate that you can only do five days a week. There are some school districts who are still virtual in the state, and there are many that are hybrid only without a five day a week option. Currently, we, just for point of record, currently we are hybrid, but our elementary students are in attendance five days a week or have the option at the elementary level to be in school five days a week as of right now. So that, I think that's what, that's what they're going to be asking.
Okay, yeah, I just want to be clear, we can open up five days, but it may not be exactly, exactly what it was, but that's good to know. And then the one on the computer education, I mean, I think it's important, it's just a little bit perplexing again that they keep going and adding all these extra requirements on the school districts to yet add another additional requirement that, you know, in the past, they like to do these things and say the kids don't actually have to like pass it, they just have to take it. I don't know what their goal is for it, but, you know, are they requiring now instead of twenty-four, twenty-five credits, or I don't know exactly what that ends up looking like?
I can't recall if it was adding an additional credit. I can look into that.
No, you don't have to look into it. It's more just a comment. I mean, they're going to go through so many iterations before this thing's over, but they definitely like to keep adding on.
There are multiple, looking at the prefile bills, there were multiple bills that addressed adding different things to the curriculum. I will, financial literacy, computer science, media literacy. So that is definitely something on the
Baron, hit your button. Sorry. Yeah, it's hard to see the light when you're looking straight on.
As I read H three six, thirty-six twelve, the second bullet about twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, from my understanding and conversations with the State Department, it is to offer at least one computer science course, but it's not requiring the students to take the course as of right now. It is that every high school and public charter school must offer at least one computer science course. So there are some school districts that don't offer computer science or the opportunity for students to take computer science at all, but it's not requiring them to take it like health. Health is one of those courses that you're speaking of that you're required to have a unit of health or have to take a unit of physical education. Not only you have to offer it, but the students have to have that as a credit. But in this case, it would be a matter of just simply offering it and making it accessible or available to all students in state.
Again, thank you, Libby. I appreciate the work that the committee is working on. Love to have, as Ms. Agostini stated, asked to advocate on behalf of teachers. I would love for this board to finally get an agenda that we can all agree on so that when we're asked about those things, we know what the board supports and what we as individuals support and where we stand on that. So I'm excited to get some traction. Thank you for your work with that committee.
Absolutely. And I failed to mention, we were, the committee was originally scheduled to meet tomorrow evening. That has going to be postponed, just to make sure we give Dr. Holmes time to fully recover. So right now, tentatively scheduled, the ad hoc committee is scheduled to meet Thursday. We'll be getting a notice out, an agenda out for that publicly for tomorrow. Thank you.
Yep. All right. And with that, we will move on to, I hate to say I cringe, but I move on to the draft agenda items for the February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one meeting. Dr. Davis.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, you have before you the draft agenda items for the February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one School Board Meeting, which will be held here at R two I two with the call to order for executive session at five thirty. And executive session items as listed in the draft agenda, we have student appeals, student admissions, requests into the district's adult education program, contractual matter as well. And as we adjourn from executive session and come into public session, we have the inspirational moment, the approval of the agenda. We'll ask for the approval of the consent agenda. Public participation, number one, voting on executive session items, which includes student appeals and admissions to the district adult education program should there be any. We'll have under new business, no action requested, the report from the superintendent, superintendent highlights, we'll have our legislative update. We also have a report on the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school calendar. We have the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal audit report, and we have a report from Kate, for Kate, Avid, and Early College. So we do have a very thick impact agenda for this upcoming board meeting. We'll have an agenda items, number nine, will be items for the next agenda. We'll ask for the draft, we'll present the draft, ask for the approval. Moving to public participation, number two, should there be any, we'll have the board and superintendent comments, followed by executive session two if needed, and voting on items in executive session two if needed. If not, we will move from public, I'm sorry, from boards superintendent comments to adjournment at fifteen point one.
All right, board members, other items you'd like to see on this agenda? All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Agostini.
I would like to request that we have the human resources update for our next meeting, please.
So we, you made that request. I've had the discussion with you that we are going to have an HR update tomorrow in the agenda setting meeting, Dr. Davis and I, which we do periodically throughout the year, need to get together to understand the work and the time that's needed. I, I can't commit to that being at the next meeting, but it will be on a near agenda based off the work required from the district.
Mr. Chair, I need clarification is, I think, board member, a board trustee's member, Ms. Agostini is either making a motion or she's asking a question. If she's making a motion, the appropriate next step would be to receive a second and a vote if she's indeed making a motion to add the item. I think you asked for a motion for items to be added to agenda?
Well, we're not on the voting part. I asked if anybody had any additions. If they did, then we can make a motion at this time. So Ms. Agostini, are you wanting to make that a motion?
Yes, then I'll make a motion to add a human resources update for our next meeting on February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, can I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Elkins. Is there any discussion?
Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
If I understood correctly, you did say that there would be an HR update as soon as you're able to compile the information and get all the particulars, that it may not be the next meeting, but that you would have an update. Is that correct?
Are you asking me, Mrs. Mackey or Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair or Dr. Davis, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll answer. We've already had the discussion with administration that we will do an HR update and that it will include the items that have been requested from various board members that are HR-related. The timing is the question. So Ms. Agostini is asking for it to be on the next meeting. Administration has asked, in my previous discussions, that they have time to make sure that they can have a comprehensive report to meet the need of all of the board members. Dr. Caution Parker.
Mr. Chair.
And then I'll get you, Dr. Elkins, after Dr. Caution Parker.
I, I, I agree. I mean, I support that, that have the, have the report. I don't know if we can be ready by the twenty-third, having been involved in some of the work that has to go into this. When do you think, or do you have any idea as to when it could be ready for presentation?
I believe we can have it ready for the first board meeting in March.
In March, okay. I can support that, yeah.
Okay, Dr. Elkins.
Oh, I guess we need to vote. I wanted to add something to the agenda, so I, I think I have to wait until after we take the vote for Mrs. Agostini's motion.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't voted on it yet. We were, we were in discussion on it. I think unless there's any further discussion, we'll now move on to the vote. With no further discussion, Ms. Agostini's motion
I would like to make an amendment.
What's that?
If I
Ms. McFadden.
I would like to amend Mrs. Agostini's request motion to change it from February twenty-third to discussion of HR presentation on March, for the first meeting in March.
Okay, with Robert Quirk of voters, I can't, I can't accept an amendment. We have to vote on the proposal that's out there. And then if that fails, then another motion can be brought forward, but I, we can't change the original motion.
Okay, so we
Well, Mrs. Agostini can rescind her motion.
After a second's been made, we have to take action.
So we vote now, and then I can
Right, if we, if we all vote it down, then we can reset the table. But once we have a second, we have to take action on it.
Okay.
So which includes, I mean, and I'm not, anybody can vote no to the motion if we want to reset the table. But is there any further discussion on Ms. Agostini's motion to have an HR report added to the next meeting? If not, then all in favor, vote aye. Raise your hand, please. We're voting on the next meeting. Vote aye. All against, raise your right hand, please. Dr. Elkins.
My hand is raised.
Okay, so motion, motion fails five to one. All right, are there any other? Ms. McFadden.
Okay, I'm making motion to add Ms. Agostini's request for HR information to the first meeting in March.
Okay, motions, Ms. Mc, sir.
Just as a matter of record, we'll probably state the motion as a motion is to add to the agenda of the HR report, not Ms. Agostini's motion. I don't want to state that for the record. This is a new motion, so this is your motion, Mrs. McFadden. So your adding, your motion is to add to the agenda for March ninth, the, a report, an HR report.
Ms. McFadden, you can speak your mind, but if, make sure we're clear on your motion.
Okay. Make sure you get this right. I would like to make a motion to add an HR report to the March ninth meeting.
Okay, so motion made by Ms. McFadden. Dr. Elkins, you still, you still seconded that motion as it stated?
Yes.
All right, Dr. Elkins seconded. Is there any discussion on that? With no further discussion or no discussion, and we can take the vote, all in favor, raise your right hand.
My hand is raised.
Okay, and Ms. McFadden, I can't see your hand. Okay, I'm sorry, it's hard with the Plexiglas and all, I can't see now. So motion passes unanimously. So we will add that to the March ninth agenda. Are there any other motions for the next meeting for the February twenty-third draft agenda? All right, with that, we'll move on to approval of the draft agenda for February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, if I can have a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I moved to approve the draft agenda for February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Richland two School Board of Trustees.
Motion is made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Yes.
And all opposed, motion passes five to one. We have no public participation, no second public participation, so we will now move on to the board and superintendent comments. Dr. Elkins, I'm going to start with you on the phone, and just make sure you're speaking right into the mic because it's been a little hard to completely hear you.
Okay, just want to say thank everyone for a productive meeting this evening. Not sure if you guys had an opportunity to watch the webinar today. It was the Facultal and School Board Association Council of School Attorneys, along with Dr. Bell, and they talked about the COVID nineteen vaccine, which is rolling out, what do we need to know webinar. I had an opportunity to actually ask two questions, and I want to share the answers with all of you in the public study. As you are aware, I am not attending our face-to-face school board meeting because we do have a school board member who is refusing to wear a mask, because I want to stay safe and I want to make sure that my mother and family stays since I am a caregiver. I am not going to endanger myself or my family. So one question that I did ask about the bell, the first question was, do you believe wearing only a face shield is, is as reliable as wearing a face mask for protection, prevention of COVID nineteen? And I just want to share with the public her response back to that question. If you don't believe, or not, I do suggest, there are some situations where a face shield must be used, which is covered, absolutely, we all feel
Dr. Elkins, I don't want to interrupt you, but we can't understand a word that's being said.
Okay, if you can hear me, I'll just basically just, I just didn't want, wait one second, let me stop it. Okay. They are lacking in that protection that is offered by a mask, but it's not So, a face shield, they have two components for taking the eyes from that, which is also
No, Dr. Elkins, I don't mean to be rude, but we can't understand anything.
Oh, you can't? Okay, I apologize for that. Basically, let me just stop it. Give me one second. I apologize for that. Basically, and I sent the video over to Dr. Davis and to Mr. Manning. But basically, Dr. Bell said that a face shield does not protect anyone from COVID, that because a face shield only protects the eyes and a face mask covers the entire face, it's much safer to wear a mask instead of a shield. But she goes into details, and I want to share that. So if anyone is interested in hearing her response to that question, please reach out to me and I will submit the video to you. But my second question was, for one of the attorneys, who's the local attorney right here in Columbia, and I asked as far as when a face covering, that school board members have the same guidelines as the faculty, staff, and students. And of course, that one particular attorney stated that they should, because as school board members, we should set the example for what we expect. And then I also had an opportunity to look at what Dr. Davis responded to, and his response was, for Richland School District two, we require a face mask, although policy ADD indicates if you can wear a shield, we in Richland School District two require that everyone wears a mask. So with that being said, hopefully, we'll all get on board, and I'll be able to see you guys face to face. But until that time, I will be calling. And again, if anyone wants to see and hear the video of the questions, the answers to my questions, feel free to reach out to me at eight zero three two zero zero two one two one, or feel free to send an email. And my email address is puddingstudents, with an S first, two thousand twelve at gmail dot com. As always, continue to wear your mask, stay safe, and if there's anything you need a voice for, please don't hesitate to give me a call because I am a voice for the voiceless. I am a support system for all of my educators, and I'm looking forward to you guys being able to get that bonus. I think Dr. Davis said it'd be sometime this month or at least next month, so I look forward to you guys being able to receive that bonus. Thank you. And again, if I can do anything, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Agostini.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I know that it was hard to hear what Dr. Elkins had to say. I was on the phone call today too with, in the webinar, and maybe other board members were as well, but the question was posed, and I didn't know that it was Dr. Elkins about wearing a face shield. And three times, Dr. Bell had said face shields are not ideal protection, the face shield alone is not optimal protection, and it's not recommended prevention alone. And the benefit to the face shield, what I took from the conversation was, it's more of a protective more of a protective gear for the eyes. But so perhaps ADD will come back up because the policy did state that the board would review it as recommendations change. On Saturday, we had the opportunity to attend an appreciative inquiry workshop, and we focused, or we talked about one of the areas was positive framing. And I'm hoping that that's something that the board will be willing to take into consideration. It was name it, flip it, and frame it. And the name it for me is the, the board agenda. We've had multiple discussions, so I'm hoping that we might be able to flip it and see how we can work together to get the wording in the policy so that we actually are practicing policy and just not practice. But I hope that that will come up. And that was the policy that I was looking for. And I can't, generally, when we sit here, we can pull up the policies in the meeting, but policies weren't coming up. So I was trying to go through Google. That did not work. But anyhow, have a great evening, and thank you to all the presenters and those who are recognized this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Caution Parker?
First, I'd like to thank Helen Grant for her presentation this evening. It was very nice. Thank you. And I know I went to high school with some of your relatives. I know I did. There are a lot of Richburgers over there at C. A. Johnson High. I know I did. I'm gonna find them. I'm gonna go back and look at my yearbook. But thank you. Deeply appreciate that. And Dr. Davis, again, your superintendent highlights, especially we just said 39 magnet programs. And I was the administrator working with the first magnet program in this district, TLC at Dent Middle School, the sixth grade. I was over the sixth grade. And that was back in 1990, 91, something like that. It's been a long time ago, but I can't believe 39 magnet programs now. We're doing well. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McFadden?
I would say thank you to everybody on the committee and on the board of trustees, and Dr. Davis, Mr. Manning. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you. Ms. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Davis, how, how many pages long was the list of accomplishments that you read with regard to our students and teachers and community members? How many? You flipped the page a few times. How many pages did you read from, did you read from?
Four, five, I guess.
Four or five. My, my point in saying that is I thanked all the presenters individually who presented, and the Saturday workshop that we had was phenomenal. It was, the people who presented on Saturday thought it not robbery to come to, to come to edify the school board meeting with thoughts of communication and positivity, positivity and working together, and this is me again, to keep the main thing, the main thing. Dr. Davis read from four sheets of accomplishments tonight, and I keep up with the website and email updates and social media. He didn't touch on everyone who has accomplished something in this district that is noteworthy, in the midst of a pandemic, in the midst of trying to keep teachers safe, in the midst of trying to keep students safe, in the midst of trying to keep families safe. That is the main thing at this time. And so I thank the people in this room, those who are watching, who have, you know, better things to do, but you choose to watch these board meetings to glean information. I hope that you are getting the information that you need. The main thing is the main thing, educating students and keeping them safe in the midst of a pandemic. And to hear the list of accomplishments and just blessings that Dr. Davis read from tonight is just phenomenal to me to, for, for excellence to still be occurring in the midst of this dark time otherwise in our nation. Dr. Grant, I think I've already made some comments, but I'm thankful to Ellen Richburg because from her flows you. And I'm thinking of so many stories in my family, and I'm sure other people have stories that make you who you are, and that is part of your main thing and the main part of your being, is to being the person that you are. So thank you all for being the people that you are. Stay safe and bless you all.
Thank you, Dr. Davis.
I too want to take the opportunity to thank all of our guests that attended this board meeting tonight, whether it virtually or in person. Again, always thank you to my staff for all the work that you do in preparation for these board meetings. It doesn't go, it's not said often, and I try to, I try to say it at each board meeting. I appreciate all that you do to put this information together so that our board is informed and prepared. Thank you to our architectural firm that is working on our Performing Arts Center. We appreciate you coming out and sharing that information with our board. The renderings look great, and we're super excited about the future of Richland School District 2 as it relates to our facilities. Thank you to Dr. Grant for her presentation today, her words of inspiration, I should say, today, as we celebrate and continue to, to recognize the contribution of African Americans to this country through Black History Month, and we really appreciate all that you shared today. I also want to echo the sentiments of what we pulled from on Saturday, our workshop and appreciative inquiry. It is so important that not only do we name it and flip it, but we also understand the framework in which we look at things. And we have to ask ourselves about why do we disagree? Are we simply disagreeing for the sake of disagreeing, or there's a purpose behind the disagreement? James Baldwin once said that, "We can disagree and still love each other unless your disagreement is rooted in my oppression and the denial of, the denial of my humanity and my right to exist." So let's think about those things as we're moving forward. Our students are continuously watching us, and our community is continuously watching us. We, we have an obligation and a responsibility to remain civil. We have an obligation and responsibility to put the business of this district first and foremost. And the business of this district is, are the students of this district. Our mission remains, and I will keep us focused and be, on being mission driven, is in partnership with our community, we're preparing global citizens of tomorrow, citizens who are prepared to lead and excel in their chosen pathway. And every decision we should make should be, should be about this, about that. Disagreements about how items get on the agenda and so on and so forth, that take 10 to 15 to 20 minutes of, of discussion each and every board meeting, does not benefit our students at all. So we have to stay focused on the mission and be mission driven so that we can continue to do the work that the people elect our board members to do. And you all do a fantastic job, and you're not appreciated enough, and that you select the superintendent's administrative staff to do as well. But we have to be mission driven and focused on the mission of this school district. And that's what our responsibility as administration is. I appreciate your efforts. I appreciate your time. Happy Black History, Black History Month to, to all of you. And I look forward to seeing you all next month at our, later this month, at our next board meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. You know, I'm sitting here listening to all the comments debating on whether I come from what we just learned from the positive side, or whether I come from the negative side. But I got to tell you, I feel a certain kind of way about how this meeting went down today. We had these architects here, we had lawyers here that were helping us to be a better district, and we devolve into this you versus me and what I get done and what you get done, and questioning the integrity of Dr. Davis and his staff in front of our guests, and then the public in a way that does not help move anything forward in this district, other than to create and further divide this board from being effective and accomplishing anything. And I got to tell you, I'm just quite frankly pissed off. And I don't know y'all see me pissed off, but I'm pissed off tonight. We have to do better.
I'm always pissed off.
I'm all about everybody having different opinions and viewpoints and diversity, but we cannot sit here and continue to point fingers and sit in our unhappiness and continue to create this divide amongst each other, and the lack of professionalism in the way that this works. It just cannot continue if we're going to get anything done and accomplished. And the icing on the cake was the, the question of integrity of Dr. Davis and his staff. I, I take real exception to all of that. Can I have a motion to please adjourn the meeting?
Mr. Chair, I move we adjourn the meeting.
I have a motion by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. All in favor, raise your right hand. Dr. Elkins?
I'm in favor.
Thank you. Motion is unanimous. We're adjourned.